Let's begin this meeting of the Clovis City Commission. I'd like to welcome each of you commissioners. I'd like to welcome city management, other folks from city administration and staff, department heads, and everyone that has joined our meeting this evening, welcome. We'll begin. Well, first, I'd like to mention that we obviously are holding this meeting virtually in order to adhere to the limits on gathering and so forth. However, the public is encouraged to participate in our meeting by viewing it in the few places that you can do that, which would be Southern Link Channel 10, the city's website, cityofclovis.org, and the city's Facebook page. If you wish to provide communication or comment to the commission, you can phone in and by calling 575-763-9200. You can call right now and and you would be put on hold until the point in the agenda where we would ask you to communicate whatever it is you would wish with the city commission. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. You're welcome to unmute and say the pledge with me if you like. We'll honor the United States flag, then we'll salute the New Mexico flag immediately following the prayer with God lead us in. So if you would pray with me. Heavenly Father, we praise you tonight. I would thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy because of your goodness. And, and Lord, we ask that you would guide us as we conduct the city's business tonight. It is our, our privilege and pleasure to serve in this fashion. And we pray that you would make us wise managers and good stewards of the city's resources and give us your wisdom to do what is right in each case. We pray for your mercy and your protection for our community, that you would bring an end to the COVID-19 pandemic, that you would bless us as a community and help us to recover quickly and move into a season of prosperity following this, this tough season that we've been through. But Lord, thank you for the many good things that we are enjoying in the midst of it. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. Joining me in honoring our nation's flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States and to the results of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, the zealous of privilege and friendship among the united corps. This meeting of the Clovis City Commission has been called to order. With the clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Lovett?
Here.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid here.
Commissioner Casas?
Commissioner Casas here.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott here.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant here.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza here.
Commissioner Renda?
Commissioner Renda here.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley here.
Mayor Morris?
Here, thank you, Ms. Burrows. Commissioners, next is the approval of tonight's agenda. Again, when we're in this virtual meeting mode, I will need to, on any action item, I'll come to each of you in a rotating order. So I'll check with each of you now on the agenda to, to ask if you have any recommendations for rearranging the agenda or removing any of the items. And I'll begin with Commissioner Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any issues with the agenda.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lovett?
Mr. Lovett, I don't have any issues.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott has no issue.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, no changes.
Commissioner Casas?
Commissioner Casas, no changes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, no changes.
Commissioner Render?
Commissioner Render, no changes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, no changes, mayor.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. I think the second came from Commissioner Garza. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Madrid?
Yes.
Commissioner Casas?
Commissioner Casas, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Renda?
Commissioner Renda, aye.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried and tonight's agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next is the approval of minutes from the Thursday, December 3 meeting. I'll, I'll start by checking with Commissioner Lovett.
Commissioner Lovett, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Elliott?
No issues.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, no issues.
Commissioner Casas?
Commissioner Casas, no issues.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, no issues.
Commissioner Render?
Commissioner Render, no issues.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, no, no issues.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, no issues, and I move for approval.
Thank you.
I second it. Commissioner Elliott?
Motion to approve from Commissioner Garza, second from Commissioner Elliott. Would the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Casas?
Commissioner Casas, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Renda?
Commissioner Renda, aye.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Thank you. By a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried. Next is recognition of visitors. I noticed we have visitors that have joined us in the meeting this evening virtually. We may have visitors on the phone. We'd like to welcome you all to the meeting. We look forward to hearing from you when we reach the portion of the agenda that you're here for. Next is proclamations, awards, and presentations. And we have a handful of presentations here this evening, which is, which is great. They're, they're all celebrated. The first is recognition of Parks and Recreation Director Mark Dehoff. And Mr. Dehoff has, has retired after many years of service to the city. And we would like to recognize him and honor him for that service. Mr. Hoball, did you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. It's, it is my privilege this evening to recognize Mark for his years of service with the city of Clovis and the director of our Parks and Recreation Department. Over the last six years, his leadership has been forthcoming and shown through the implementation of our Parks Master Plan to working with our various leagues and maintaining a high quality level at our parks and making sure that our citizens and our, and our children have places to be able to go and play and enjoy themselves and the quality of life that he's added to, to those programs and in our parks. So just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mark for his, his service to the city of Clovis. He's, he's at that time where he's getting to retire. So it's wonderful time for him and his wife. And I'm sure that they have many things planned. And it, once again, it's just a pleasure to be able to recognize him and wish him well into retirement. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hoball. Appreciate that. And I think that, that I will be able to present Mr. Dehoff with, with the plaque. And he's in, he's entered the room so that we could do that. But Commissioners, would any of you have any comments on Mr. Dehoff's retirement?
Mayor, this is Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. I just want to thank Mark for his years of service to the, to the community of Clovis. And it's been a pleasure working with him and wishing the best in his future endeavors.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Garza here. Mark, thank you for your years of dedication to the city of Clovis, your hard work. You are going to be missed. You are a good leader. You were very instrumental in working with our softball fields, net hog park, shooting range, the golf course. I mean, you were there and we appreciate that. And again, thank you for your service to the community.
This is Commissioner Elliott. Mark, thank you so much for your hard work. And I enjoyed working with you on the shotgun range, the trips we went to Santa Fe and your leadership there was really much appreciated. We're going to miss you, but you have great luck in your new adventure and you and your wife. And thank you so much for your, for your many years of service.
Mark, this is Commissioner Lovett. I feel like I just need to say it's Leo because you, you trained me years ago of how to work hard and how to deal with people when I had a chance to work with your family. And you're still a hard worker and you're still the same man of principle that you were then. And it's been a pleasure, again, getting to work with you for a short time. And again, congratulations on your retirement. Well deserved. Right. This is Commissioner Madrid. I want to thank Mark for all the work he did for us and I'm going to miss you. And thank you for what you did. See you around Clovis.
Commissioner Casas, Mark, I want to echo what everybody else has said. You were awesome. Your leadership really is outstanding. I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Commissioner Render here. Thanks, Mark, for all you've done for the city. I appreciate it. Fair win, following seas.
Commissioner Rowley, I think everyone has done the congratulations, but thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioners. Mark, we've got a plaque for you and I want to congratulate you on your retirement and wish you the very best. God bless you.
I appreciate that. Really do. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you all. It's been a pleasure to work with you.
Okay. She's clicking away. Congratulations, Mark. Thank you for everything.
Hi.
Thanks, Mark.
Next, we have recognition of Brenda Hankins, Senior Services Program Coordinator. And, and once again, we're recognizing a, a long-term employee of the city. It, it looks like, if I'm doing the math right, that Barbara worked for the city before her retirement, just the other day on the 4th, for over 20 years. And a remarkable career. And we wanted to honor her and thank her for her service here this evening. I believe that Barbara Riggan is, is, has joined the meeting. I see you there and I'd give you the floor if you have comments.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. As Mayor said, Brenda started as program coordinator in May of 2000. And for the past 20 years, she has dedicated her life to seniors in the, in the community. Over the years, Brenda has planned and coordinated many events, such as the annual Valentine's banquet and many holiday parties for our seniors. The one event that, that she looked forward to hosting each year was the Veterans Day Breakfast. Anyone that knows Brenda and has been to a Veterans Day Breakfast knows that she has a huge heart and extreme pride for our military and our veterans. Unfortunately, Brenda wasn't able to make it tonight. However, I do want to thank her for all of her hard work and her countless hours that she dedicated to our senior citizens. I want her to know that she made a difference in so many lives and her presence at the center, it, it will be missed. Congratulations on your retirement, Brenda, and have fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riggan. Did we have anyone else that wished to make a comment? I'll, I'll lift up Barbara's plaque so that everyone has the chance to see it as the 20-year puck to go with it. And as Barbara, as Barbara mentioned, Brenda couldn't be here this evening, so we'll hand that plaque to her at some, at some other time.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Render.
Yes, Commissioner.
Brenda will be missed by all the seniors whose, whose lives she crossed during her 20 years. She did a wonderful job and, and I know she'll be missed. Generally, people talk about her all the time. So thank you, Brenda, for everything you've done. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I want to echo the same sentiments. I think one of the, the events that I enjoyed going to was the Non-Adrian Tea, which was well attended and it, it was something that she really enjoyed doing. Brenda, best of, best wishes to you and you'll, you'll be missed because you took care of our senior citizens and that's a thank you's job and I appreciate your, your hard work. Thank you.
Brenda, Commissioner Elliott, thank you so much for your hard work. And I are a senior and I appreciate it so much. And it's, it's great to have things for the seniors in Curry County to do. And you will be missed, but enjoy your retirement and thank you so much for your many years of service.
Brenda, this is Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. I just want to thank you for your years of service. You always put your heart into everything you did and, and looked after the seniors and you did such a great job doing it. So we're, we're going, we appreciate everything you did. You are going to be missed. But congratulations on your retirement.
This is Commissioner Madrid. I would like to thank you, also echo what everybody else has said. You are a true advocate for our seniors and please continue to look after them. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Madrid. Thank you, Brenda, for all the work you did for us and you'll be missed. Thank you. Have a good retirement.
Wonderful. Yes, I would like to echo everyone's sentiments. And Ms. Brenda Hankins, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your service to the, to the city of Clovis and to the, the seniors in, in our city and in our community. We appreciate that very much. And next, we have yet another recognition. We, we would like to recognize Master Police Officer Russell Gould on, on his retirement upcoming. I believe his retirement is tomorrow. His, his service to the, the city has been, has been great and remarkable over, over 23 years now of service, which began back in February of, of 1997. And so we wanted to take the opportunity to honor him and thank him this evening. And I believe we have Chief Ford available. Chief Ford, would you like to make any comments?
You know, I would. And I appreciate y'all being here and I appreciate him being here. Mr. Gould started with us back in 97. February, I came here about seven months later. So I've spent majority of my career working together with Mr. Gould. Mr. Gould started, he hit 20 years in the Air Force as a security forces and combat arms instructor. Then he left that and came to us and did another almost 24 years, 23 years, 10 months. So he's got 40, over 43 years of service to the community and to this country. So I truly appreciate his dedication, his hard work. He will be greatly missed. He's, all his years of service and especially his years in helping in the firearms section has been his passion and he's done a great job with it. He started, of course, as an officer, became an FTO, was promoted MPO, as we call it, in 2005. And his, many of you may not know him, but he's one of the gentlemen that works what we call Field Service Bureau. He wears the uniform, drives the marked unit, his boots on the ground, taking the calls for service and, and helping the community. So those are the kind of people that are greatly missed, especially with all his service and his seniority and all the help he's given this community. So it is a wonderful day when we get to see him leave and retire. And I wish him the very best and then best of luck in everything he does after this. And we appreciate everything he's done with our department.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate those, those comments. Commissioners, I would let you know that Officer Gould has, has entered the room and I'm going to be able to hand him the plaque. But I, of course, want to give you the opportunity to, to do any well wishes.
Mayor, this is Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. I just want, want to thank you for all his years of service to the city and his dedication, not only to the city, but also the police department. Congratulations on your retirement. And
This Commissioner Elliott, thank you so much for your years of service. And Clovis is a better place because of you and the people like you. I have so much appreciation for our police department. It's top-notch and y'all do a great job. So enjoy your retirement and thank you so much for your service.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Garza here. I met Mr. Gould years ago. He called me one time and he was telling me that he had found my wallet. It had been stolen. And I first met him then and he was very professional. And he, I guess, we found out who did it later, later on. But he was very professional and we just, I'm just glad that he never got to stop me with a traffic citation. Appreciate that, sir. But I, I want to thank you for your service to the country and service to the community. You can rest and, and enjoy your retirement, sir. Thank you for your service.
This Commissioner Render, congratulations on making it to retirement. Take your pack off, brother. You're rated.
I'm ready.
Great. I'd like to read the inscription, Officer Gould. It says, "With the heartfelt thanks of a grateful community, thank you for sharing your time and talent." Thank you. Appreciate you, sir. Enjoy your retirement.
Definitely do that. Thank you.
Commissioners, next, we have an exciting opportunity to recognize a truly outstanding athlete from our community. And that is Chad Mayfield. And I believe he's joined the meeting this evening. I, I wasn't sure he, he would actually get to do that. I've, I've never met him in person. I look forward to doing that someday, someday. But we, we want to recognize Chad Mayfield. For those of you that, that haven't or that have maybe been under a rock for the last week or so and haven't heard, he, he accomplished something that, that most athletes only dream of. And that is, he, he's risen to the level of world champion in, in his sport. And that is tie-down calf roping. And, and, and it's truly a bright spot in, in, in our community. And in 2020, to be able to, to, to know that we have a world champion from right here in our community. I believe Ernie Koss has joined the meeting. And, and if, Ernie, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we're really proud of Chad. And from our, from my personal standpoint and professional standpoint, you know, we hosted, the city of Clovis and the Clovis Chamber of Commerce has hosted the High Plains Junior Rodeo Finals over the years. And so I've actually have photos here in my office of Chad when he was five or seven or so. So it's been great to witness a young man from Clovis, New Mexico, that has come from just the local rodeo finals to being the world champion. So I was privileged last year to be able to go to the finals and cheer him on. And so I just appreciate you recognizing Chad, Mayor and the commission. And Chad, if you'd like to say a few words, that would be great.
Yeah, hey, I just want to thank everybody for appreciating that. And, you know, it's, I'm just glad to be able to be a part of Clovis and been here all my life. And I'll probably be here forever. My family's from here and it's just a great place. And I want to thank everybody.
Thank you for joining the, the, the meeting this evening, Commissioners. I, I went to prorodeo.com and, and, and looked Chad up. He, he's not hard to find, by the way. And I, I, I got a kick out of, of looking at his bio. And I just wanted to share a little bit from there. One, we probably don't have the time for me to list all of his, his, his wins that are listed from, you know, the, the couple of years that he's been a pro. But I wanted, I wanted to read from his, this, this touched me, actually. I wanted to read from his personal bio section. It, it says that he's six foot three, 200 pounds. So good-sized young man. And, but it says that his father, Sylvester, which is, Mr. Mayfield is well-known in our community as well. He competed in rodeo and qualified for the national finals rodeo in 1985 and again in 1987. It says that Chad's mother, Jo Ellen, is a schoolteacher and his sister Shelby Mayfield competes in rodeo as well. It says that Chad enjoys playing basketball and riding young horses for fun. And he men, it mentions here that his favorite rodeo is the Cheyenne, Wyoming Frontier Days. This is the good, this was, this was the neat part, I thought. It, it says here that Chad's rodeo idols are his dad, Sylvester Mayfield and Trevor, Trevor Brazil. I just thought that was great. Chad, you represent our community so well and we're, we're so proud of you. A couple of career highlights. I think Ernie mentioned it, but in 2018, National High School Rodeo Association Champion, tie-down roper. And then his, if I'm understanding this right, it would have been his first year as a pro. In 2019, he finished 12th in the world standings in tie-down roping. And then, of course, just a week ago, at the national finals rodeo, he became the world champion tie-down roper. And Chad, I just wanted to say on behalf of the commission and, and the community that your rising to the top of your sport is truly an amazing accomplishment and one that, that you should be proud of and, and, and we're proud of you. And, you know, you, you make Clovis proud and Clovis is proud of you. And we want to congratulate you on your incredible accomplishment of being a world champion tie-down roper.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thanks for joining our meeting.
All right. I'd say something to Chad.
Oh, yes, yes, Commissioner Garza.
Chad, I just want to say thank you for keeping Clovis on the national news. We appreciate that. And I, I want to commend you on being a good road model for a lot of kids that are moving up and trying the sport. Keep up the good work. Keep your chin up. And keep on working hard, my man. You're the man. Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir. I will. Thank you.
Chad, this is Commissioner Elliott. Thank you so much for all you do. And Clovis is so proud of you. And congratulations on your winning the world champion roping. And what a, what a great feat. And I just thank you so much and appreciate you and God bless you, brother.
Thank you.
Chad, this is Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. And I just want to tell you, I watched you on television the other night and watched you receive that gold buckle. And I couldn't have been more proud of you at that time. I mean, from Clovis and representing Clovis. I mean, from Clovis and representing Clovis, it was just, it was great to see, see that. Congratulations on, uh, your world championship.
Thank you.
Chad, this is Commissioner Lovett. I had the chance to see you rope for a lot of years. Uh, my son Kobe, uh, roped, uh, a few years older than you, but, uh, you were roping in his, I think, his same age, uh, class, uh, just for the competition. And, uh, there was something special about you back in those days and there's still something special about you. And thank you for bringing a positive light to Clovis and thank you again for, for just being you and, uh, for your championship and, uh, just, uh, look forward to the many more great things that we're gonna see from you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No, this is Commissioner Madrid. I just wanna congratulate you for being world champion. Keep up the good work and thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Chad, Commissioner Casals here. I just wanna thank you for putting Clovis in the map. I think that is awesome. Continue working hard. May God bless you and your family.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Chad, congratulations. Everyone has said it and so just reiterate, congratulations, keep up the good work. It's good to see another young person wanna stay in Clovis as well.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Chad, this is Commissioner Render. Uh, thank you. Good job. Hang in there. I hope you get a buckle as big as a dinner plate.
Thank you.
That, that was a fun one. Thanks, thanks again for being here, Chad, and, and, and once again, congratulations on, on your world championship. Next, Commissioners, we have a presentation of proclamation proclaiming December twenty twenty as National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month. And do we have Ms. Shelley Meeks, uh, who's joined the meeting to share with us about this?
I'm here. Um, thank you so much, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners for having the proclamation and letting me present it to you. Um, you know, as we, as you know, as we get into the holidays, um, drunk and drug driving can be more of an issue, so we wanna make sure that we have a lot of prevention efforts out there in the community upfront. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for being here and thank you for bringing attention to this. Uh, it's very important and, uh, I'll, I would like to read the proclamation, uh, before the Commission at this point. Whereas Curry County values the health and safety of all of its citizens and whereas local leaders in government and in the community understand that continued support and effort of citizens in our community is the most effective tool in their efforts to reduce the use of alcohol and drugs by New Mexicans. And whereas, according to the two thousand and eighteen National Survey on Drug Use and Health, in two thousand and eighteen, twenty point five million people between sixteen or older drove under the influence of alcohol in, in the past year. And twelve point six million drove under the influence of illicit drugs. And whereas each day, twenty-nine people in the United States die in a motor vehicle crash that involved an alcohol impaired driver. This is one death every fifty minutes with an annual cost of alcohol-related crashes of more than forty-four billion. And whereas, according to the National Highway Safety, excuse me, according to the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration, ten thousand five hundred and eleven people die in alcohol impaired crashes in two thousand and eighteen. Alcohol impaired crash fatalities accounted for twenty-nine percent of all crash fatalities and the yearly prevalence of positive drug tests in fatally injured drivers increased significantly from twenty point seven percent in two thousand and seven to thirty point seven percent in two thousand and seventeen in the United States. And whereas the NHTSA in two thousand and eighteen, alcohol impaired driving fatalities accounted for twenty-eight percent of all traffic fatalities in New Mexico. And whereas, according to the New Mexico Department of Transportation in two thousand and eighteen, there were one hundred and thirty-one DWI arrests and twenty-seven alcohol-involved vehicle accidents and one alcohol-related fatality in Curry County. And whereas, New Mexico Department of Transportation ranks Clovis as tenth in the top-ranking cities in New Mexico for alcohol-involved crashes in two thousand and eighteen. And now therefore I, Mike Morris, Mayor of the City of Clovis, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby recognize December twenty twenty as Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month and urge all residents to drink responsibly and not let friends drink or do illicit drugs and drive. Again, thank you, Ms. Meeks, for, for joining our meeting and for, uh, bringing attention to this important issue that, that, that our community faces. Commissioners, we are now at Agenda Item Nine, Receipts of Petitions and Communications. Uh, we had a couple of, of planned, uh, items there this evening. The first is a CARES Local Government Funding Report from Mr. Raymond Mondragon from Eastern Plains Council of Governments. Uh, Mr. Mondragon, are you on?
I am on, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can and wanna thank you in advance for being here to give us a report and for the work that you've done in, in helping folks in our community, uh, with, uh, with CARES funding. And, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, City Commission, of course, Eastern Plains Council of Governments. We work as a team. I do wanna recognize the Chairman of our Board, uh, Fidel Madrid, uh, City Commissioner, District Three, is, uh, and then the, uh, alternate is Helen Casals, uh, is the alternate on our board. Eastern Plains Council of Governments, as you, all of you are aware, uh, received a, an agreement contract with the City of Clovis. Uh, the City of Clovis had applied for local CARES, uh, to assist residents with, uh, housing, rental mortgage utilities, all three utilities, uh, and also, uh, with assistance with childcare. I'm happy to report, Mayor and City Commissioners, that, uh, we, uh, accepted a total of applicants, one hundred and forty-four, and, uh, we accepted one hundred and two of those. Uh, forty-two did not qualify, uh, for various reasons. Uh, and then for those also that did not qualify, we had five that applied that were on SSI. Eleven needed more information on their applications. There was, it was pretty tough to get, uh, some of these folks to get some of this thing done, but, uh, uh, we were able to help quite a bit of people. Eight of the applicants lived outside out in the county. We did have a applicant that called from the City of Portales that was wanting assistance from the City of Clovis. Of course, we denied that. Uh, and we had nine applicants that were not COVID-related and we had nine applicants that came in kinda late and we had already exhausted all the funds. What we did, Mayor and City Commission, is we received a total requested of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and seven, uh, seven, uh, dollars, and we only had the seventy thousand. So we did go a second round and expended all seventy thousand. And just quickly, we had thirty-two that requested assistance for water, uh, and the request on that was seven thousand, five sixty-eight, sixty-nine. We paid out, or the city paid out, three thousand, four oh four oh three. We received twenty-four requests for applicants for gas assistance and the sum of gas was two thousand, one eighty-eight, fifty-seven. Uh, the city paid out a thousand, seven oh three, thirty-eight. Electric, uh, we received fifty-nine, wa, and the sum of that request was thirty-one thousand, one seventy-three, fifty-nine. For, uh, the sum of the water, of the electric payment was eleven thousand, nine twenty-two, sixty-seven. Childcare, we had three, uh, that was paid out at thirty-five hundred dollars. And the sum, the largest request was rental and mortgage assistance of eighty requests of that, and there, what was requested with that was seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven and sixteen. And paid out by the city was forty-nine thousand, four sixty-nine, ninety-two. So basically, Mayor, City Commission, seventy-one percent went for rent, five percent for childcare, seventeen percent for electric and five percent for water. And, and one other, one other thing that I'd like to share just quickly is the, uh, Payment Protection Program, uh, that, uh, Vincent Soul, our Deputy Director, did an analysis of the Payment Protection Program, as you know, that was created by Congress. And what the Small Business Administration gave us a least and most. And, uh, the most, uh, that the, uh, Curry County got was fifty-seven million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and fifty, ninety-seven, was invested in the Clovis area. Four hundred and sixty-six businesses received PPP. Five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four jobs were retained because of the PPP. And majority of the businesses that received PPP were corporations and LLCs. So I just wanted to share that. And Mayor and Commissioner, I wanted to thank Leann. Uh, Leann, our Finance Director, has been great to work with and thank you to Claire and Justin and, uh, for working with us. So we got this done and you guys touched many hearts, a lot of people, and you helped house people and keep people warm, keep their water going and, and their childcare. So thank you and this was a Merry Christmas and God bless each and every one of you. I can stand for any questions, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mondragon. And, you know, I just wanna thank you for the, the professionalism and the, the efficiency with which you executed, uh, what we asked you to do there. Uh, thank you for helping, helping the folks in, in our community with this vital assistance. We appreciate that very, very much. Appreciate your report. Uh, Commissioners, uh, does anyone have questions for Mr. Mondragon?
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Madrid. I'd like to thank all of EPCO for all the work they did, especially Raymond. You guys did a great job. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and just, we do work as a team and, uh, we work together in concert and we help each other out here at this office.
Raymond, Commissioner Casals here. I wanna thank you. That was an awesome report, very, very professional that you guys worked at, and I wanna thank you for helping all the people that you did.
We wish we would have helped a lot more and some of the stories, Mayor and Commission, is just heartbreaking and, uh, some people we couldn't help, but I'll tell you what we did. The staff got with Salvation Army and we made sure they got food boxes.
Thank you, Raymond, for the hard work. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Garza.
Ray, this is Mayor Pro Tem Bryant. Thank you for everything you all did. It definitely made a difference in our community. We appreciate it. Thank you.
It really did. And thank you for your vote for allowing us to do that.
Mr. Mondragon, this is... Appreciate you. Yes.
Thank you, Leo. Appreciate you.
All right. Well, once again, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Mondragon. Appreciate the, the, uh, the report. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the, the great job on that.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, I wanted to thank you also for being on the, uh, Eastern Plains Council of Governments Legislative Forum today and thank you for your remarks. We appreciate that.
No, thank, thank you. Appreciate that, sir. Um, next, uh, we had a planned report under, uh, petitions and communications and that is, uh, also a CARES-related report. This is the, the CARES Small Business Grant Second Phase, uh, Update. And, uh, for that, um, I believe we have, uh, Ernie Cosse from the Chamber and Dr. Sandra Taylor Sawyer from, uh, Small Business Development Center. Uh, who would like to go first? Ernie, how about you go first? And I think you're muted, Ms. Cosse.
Okay. Sorry about that. Did you hear my report? I'm kidding. So, um, just a second here. Okay, let me pull this up. I don't know what's going on here. Sorry about that. Um, I went to unmute and now I've lost my document. There we go. Okay. Sorry about that. So, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, so first of all, I just wanna thank you, the city, especially your leadership, Mayor, uh, Justin, Claire and Leann. Um, I also want to thank, um, the Chamber and CIDC staff and specifically Chase worked really hard in this process and then the SBDC staff. So Sandra Taylor Sawyer serves as the Chairman of our CARES Task Force. And so, um, we had several volunteers that, uh, were, uh, served on the task force and then we had lots of people. I counted somewhere close to thirty people that were in and out of here helping us, uh, review and analyze each, um, um, application. So, um, I appreciate everybody that helped with this. Um, I, I do appreciate Leann and her, her bringing some girls over last week to help us get over the hump to be able to be prepared to, uh, facilitate this process in a quicker manner. So it turns out that facilitating, facilitating four point two million dollars in grants is a monumental task and knowing that we were able to directly help two hundred and one local businesses made every minute worth it. So, uh, the statistics as it relates to the second round, uh, the total number of applications in the second round were a hundred and thirty-three applications. So that's a hundred and eighteen new applicants in the second round. Uh, we did have, uh, fifteen applicants from the first round that did apply and about fourteen that did not qualify. So the total, uh, number of applications that were funded in round two is a hundred and four. And so the request was approximately, and in dollars, was approximately three point nine million in the second round and, uh, we had about one point one million to allocate. So at the end of the day, after we, um, reported, um, in the first round that we had eighty-three applicants, the total of four point two million dollars during this whole process to two hundred and one local businesses. So, uh, that's great news. I also would like to, uh, let everybody know that's listening that the deadline for the Small Business CARES Relief Grant is tomorrow at noon. So anybody that's still is looking for assistance, uh, for local business recovery can go to newmexicofinance.com. So, um, at the Chamber Board Meeting yesterday, our President Greg Southard said that probably the most important thing that we've done in a long time is to be a part of something like this. And so, um, you know, I've got a twenty-six-year career. I do believe that in the entire career that I've had, that it's been a part of something more important, that we have been a part of something more important to our local business community. So thank you very much, Mayor, City Commission, Justin, Claire, Leann, for giving us that opportunity. And it's been truly eye-opening to, um, see, um, how the pandemic has affected our local businesses, but it's been really a fulfilling experience for all of us involved. And so we sincerely hope that funding eases the burden for all our struggling businesses during such a critical time. So, um, I just wanna say Merry Christmas to each of you. And then Sandra, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything or if you have any questions and Sandra and Leann can answer it.
Well, uh, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, uh, it has really been a pleasure working with, uh, the city, Justin and Claire and Leann. Uh, it has really been great and, uh, always great to, uh, work with, uh, uh, my sister over there at the Chamber, Ernie, and, uh, of course, Chase. And, uh, you know, like Ernie said, there were several individuals that have helped out, uh, not only, uh, myself with the, uh, SBDC at Clovis Community College, but also my team, uh, Dominic Chitas and Patricia Bex, and really appreciate them as well too. And, uh, you know, had some, uh, folks who raised up their hand and said, you know, we will help. And, uh, since I really don't have permission to say their names, then I guess I won't. But, but we really do appreciate that and appreciate, appreciate everything that the Mayor did as well too. Uh, you know, this is important and, uh, it was great to, uh, be able to bring over four million dollars into the City of Clovis. And so this has, um, uh, been a very rewarding, uh, experience, uh, not really liking the circumstances that we had to do it under, but, uh, thankful that we did have the opportunity, uh, through all the work that, uh, the city did. And, uh, I, I just want to share, you know, just the importance of kinda where we are with our small businesses. Uh, the New Mexico Finance Authority, uh, loan that is scheduled to end tomorrow, they actually had three rounds where, you know, we had two. And in their, they had over, or they had a hundred million dollars to give away. And in their first round, they received like a hundred and twenty-five million requests. And in their, they had over, or they had a hundred million dollars to give away. And in their first round, they received like a hundred and twenty-five million requests. So, unfortunately, the last word that we had heard was probably, "Anyone who has not applied at this time, there may not be any money." So I'm not discouraging people not to apply by the third-round deadline of twelve noon tomorrow, but I just wouldn't be surprised. So, I still just wanted to let folks know that. And thank you, Mayor, for everything that you do. And I'll stand for any questions.
Mayor, I just want to say thank you to Ernie, Sandra, Paul, Chase, everybody that was involved in this process. I never knew that the giveaway was going to be this hard. But I obviously, it was hard to find who was qualifying to receive some of this funding. At the same time, I think it was a well-done process that helped a lot of businesses. And that's the whole idea, to be able to help businesses that were in dire need of funding to continue operating because it's hard times for everybody right now. I just appreciate the fact that we had some money to give away and contribute to those businesses. And best of luck to all of us. Hope that 2021 is a better year and that we can continue thriving as businesses. So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the hard work. Well done.
Ernie, this is Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. Go ahead, Leo.
Oh, I'm sorry. This Commissioner Lovett, I, again, I appreciate the work, not only how it started with the city and getting the grant. It was nice to be able to give away a little over four-and-a-quarter million dollars, but also to Ernie and Sandra and their leadership on the task force. Really do appreciate the work that went into it. And certainly, they were all hands on deck during the second round. And it was amazing what you guys accomplished. And so, thank you for your service. The businesses of our city will certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Ernie, Sandra, thank you so much for all your hard work and your staff and all the volunteers that helped put all this together. You help so many businesses survive through this. It's just a great thing to see that we were able to help our small businesses and help them hopefully get back on their feet. So, thank you for everything you did. We appreciate it.
Commissioner Elliott here. Thank you, all of y'all, for your hard work. And you've definitely made a difference in some of the businesses that might not even be here today if it wasn't for this boost. So, thank y'all and I think you've done a great job.
I wonder, Ms. Malonson, not to put you on the spot, but would you have anything to add? You've certainly played a crucial role in all of this. Appreciate any comments you have. I wanted to give you that opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. It has definitely been a challenge, but definitely well worth it. I have of these hundred, on the second round, we have submitted seventy-four so far. So I've got three applications already in. I'm working on another one and should have everything for round two submitted by noon tomorrow, provided you're available for signatures, Mayor. And for all of those businesses, it's about a ten-business-day turnaround. I'm not sure how Christmas is going to affect it, but I do feel that we'll have the money in and checks handed out to the businesses by the end of the year.
Outstanding. Thank you, Ms. Malonson. And thank you, Ms. Cost, Dr. Sandra Taylor Sawyer, for all of your work. And has already, and has already been mentioned, but all of the volunteers that made up that task force that vetted those applications and put in all that time. Thank you to everyone for this effort. You know, I can't help but think that the city of Clovis and our businesses were truly favored in this process because, you know, we can't overlook the fact that we happened to get more money for the business grant than every other city in the state except for one. And that was Las Cruces, a lot larger, a lot larger city. And so, we were favored to have that. And then, so then it was great to see the collaboration and the teamwork to get this done. And when it's done, there's four-point-two million dollars in our local community through the businesses. And so, really, really proud of everyone's work on that. Thank you so much. Any other comment?
Mayor, may I add? I looked this up right before the meeting. So, the total dollars available for this round two, the one-point-one, in the list of all the municipalities and counties that were awarded the money, there's still like, were like twenty-seven cities and counties that the second round is more than what they received. So, yeah, so we did good. So, when we first heard about the four-point-two, we ran over there to the city with donuts and they were all in numbers of four-point-two-six. And we celebrated for a quick moment. And that seems like six months ago.
Yeah.
But it wasn't. So, thank you very much again for the opportunity.
Yeah, and thanks for pointing that out. Appreciate it very much. Any other comments about CARES? Hearing none, we'll move on. And if you've joined the meeting this evening, either virtually or by phone, in order to provide comment or communications to the Commission, now is your time. And so, I would like to open it up for that. I would remind anyone wishing to give public comment that, because whatever it is that you're going to talk to us about isn't on our agenda, we won't be necessarily having discussion or taking, and we definitely would not be taking action on any of it, but we want to hear from the public on whatever it is that they would want to bring in front of the Commission. We'll use a time limit of five minutes, if that's all right. And I see Mr. Danny Jerewala. So I'd like to just let you go first, Danny.
Hello. Good evening, City Commissioners, Mayor, and everybody who is attending the meeting. My name is Dhal Jerewala. I go by Danny. I live at 140 Scottsdale Drive in Clovis, New Mexico. And I am the owner of three businesses in town. Two of them are hotels and the other one is a management company that manages the hotels. And this evening, I have joined this meeting to share my thoughts about the CARES Act grant that was awarded to the businesses. I was one of the applicants. All my three businesses were the applicants in the first round. And two of my businesses did qualify for over a hundred thousand. One of them was under a hundred thousand. And when the cap was announced, I was debating and I was, obviously, you know, as the first response, it was natural, you know? But I was always in favor of the second round and I absolutely agree. The second round, however, it was meant to be to offer assistance to the other fellow businesses in town as well. So I don't have any regrets or I really support, knowing that by capping thirteen businesses, it could help a hundred and four more businesses. I would take that any day. And knowing the circumstances, I could have been one of those businesses in the second round. So, I mean, in a hypothetical term, I would call all of you guys sent with the invisible suit and the thirteen Ls that helped the other hundred and four businesses, you know? And I am just not my businesses, but I would personally like to let my family's thoughts put it out on the table as well, that how greatly they appreciate. Because we really appreciate as far as the businesses go and my family is thankful so that I could spend a little more time with my family, you know? That helped us a lot. Another thing that I would highlight is, I just want to let you know, as far as the hospitality industry go, I do have friends, not just in New Mexico and several other cities, but also in Texas, in different other states as well. They are saluting our city and our City Commission and our city local government, you know, of what we were able to do for our businesses that it's unheard of. What we have done is just simply unheard of during these times. So, I would encourage everybody to think that it's not only consider yourself, but we have to think of all the businesses as a community and we are a team. And before I forget, I would definitely like to extend my thanks to everybody at the Chamber of Commerce who worked tirelessly to get everything, all the applications done and as well as the city of Clovis, all, everybody, including Justin, Claire, Leanne, everybody. And I think that that is just a great thing, what we were able to achieve. And it's just unthinkable, unimaginable, not done before. So, I would personally like to thank each and everyone attending the meeting today and thank you and happy holidays and happy new year. We'll see you next year, hopefully, you know? I'll get to attend one of your meetings for whatever reason. Hopefully good. But yeah, thank you so very much. And I would like to rest. Thank you. Thank you once again. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Jerewala. Very, very best wishes to you for the holiday as well as your businesses. And thank you for your comments tonight. I would need someone to notify me if we have others that are here for public comment. Anyone that's joined the meeting virtually or by phone wishing to give public comment, I just wanted to pause and make sure and not skip over someone. And not hearing any, we will move on, Commissioners. Next in tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. As you know, the consent agenda is placed on the agenda so that the Commission, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to approve or acknowledge with one motion. If any proposal does not meet with the approval of all Commission members or if a citizen so requests, that item will be heard when reached under the regular agenda. Commissioners, we have five items there this evening. The item one is the motion to place the items on consent. Five is the motion to approve. So I'll read items two through four. Item two is request for approval of Resolution Number 3048-2020 Quarterly Budget Changes. Item three is request for approval to bind property and liability insurance with travelers for calendar year 2021. Item four is request for approval of easement granting the right for Plateau Telecommunications Incorporated to enter upon airport lands in order to construct, install, operate, maintain, repair, inspect, relocate, replace, and remove an underground telecommunications system for D and D aviation. So Commissioners, I'll come to you one by one to see if you have any comments or concerns or suggestions about the consent agenda. And I'll begin with Commissioner Elliott.
I have no issues with it. It's fine like it is.
Thank you. Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, no comments or concerns.
Commissioner Casals?
Commissioner Casals, no concerns.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, no concerns.
Commissioner Rinder?
Commissioner Rinder, no concerns.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, no comments or concerns.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, no concerns, no issues.
Lastly, Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, no issues or concerns. I'd make a motion to replace these items on the consent agenda.
I second that. Commissioner Garza?
Motion from Commissioner Lovett, second from Commissioner Garza. Could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Rinder?
Commissioner Rinder, aye.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casals?
Commissioner Casals, yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried. Do I hear a motion to approve or acknowledge?
No move.
Second.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Rowley and the second from Commissioner Garza. Ms. Burrows, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Rinder?
Commissioner Rinder, aye.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casals?
Commissioner Casals, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Thank you. By a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried. Commissioners, we have nothing to deal with under introduction and adoption of resolutions and ordinances, nor do we have any unfinished business that brings us to new business. We have two items there. The first is request for approval to replace Colonial Park Golf Course Back Nine Irrigation System. And Mr. Hoal, would you advise?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. As with most assets, they have a certain useful life. And unfortunately, on our Back Nine Irrigation System at Colonial, we're approaching the end of that useful life. And this past year, the system itself has experienced over two-hundred breaks, which has led to over forty thousand dollars in labor costs and another eighty thousand dollars in material costs. As we've been working on that system throughout this past year, we've also discovered that the way that the system was set up back in the 1970s, prior to homes being built, in order to loop the system, they actually crossed Diamond Head as well as crossed St. Andrews Drive. We knew where the crossing was on Diamond Head and that it did actually run in between houses. But the crossing on St. Andrews, we did not know where it was. The way that we discovered that this year was, we had a leak. And unfortunately, that leak exposed itself coming up from underneath one of the homeowners' driveways. Because we did not want to take the chance of continuing to operate the system, we actually had to find where the loop was and we shut the loop down to that. When we did that, that led to us having pressure issues for some of the holes on the golf course and not being able to actually adequately water the golf course itself. And of course, this has led to issues with our turf management that we have on the Back Nine system. So what we did is we went out and hired a consultant to design a new irrigation and pump station for the Back Nine. We have completed that. And Touchstone Golf, who manages the golf course for us, took that proposed design out to the market and received four bids for the replacement of the system. Those four bids came back and the lowest bidder is around one-point-three-two million dollars to replace that system. The replacement will include, of course, all of the irrigation system, main lines, laterals, heads, as well as a new pump station that we're currently working with our design consultants for the reuse system on the ponds to make sure that the new ponds that are constructed out there are deep enough, as well as will meet enough storage requirement to make sure that the front nine and back nine of the golf course has enough water to be irrigated properly. The funds themselves would come out of Fund One, our general fund cash reserves of three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. And then we spread the remainder of a million dollars between Fund Sixty Cash Reserve, which is our infrastructure fund, as well as Fund Sixty-Five, which is our capital improvement fund. There's also this evening, on the phone is Keaton Ockett. He's the manager out at Colonial Park. If you have any questions, he or myself would be able to answer. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hawalt. And thank you, Mr. Ockett, for being on hand. Should there be any questions? I'll go to the commissioners again in order for any comments or questions that you have for either Mr. Hawalt or Mr. Ockett. We'll begin this with Commissioner Rowley.
Commissioner Rowley, no questions or comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Casals?
Commissioner Casals, no issues.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, no questions.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rinder?
Commissioner Rinder, no questions.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, I do have a question and a comment. The question is probably for Keaton or Mr. Hawalt as to if we decide to go ahead and move forward with replacing the irrigation system. Will that be available by spring?
It's a good question. Mr. Hawalt or Mr. Ockett?
The plan is right now to obviously start on this, the project as soon as possible. So it'll be a matter of them being able to procure the materials. My understanding is that it should be ready by spring. However, the irrigation system may be in place, but we're still going to be working on the ponds themselves on that back nine. We are at 95% completion on the design of those ponds and then we'll have to go out bidding. But the irrigation system itself should be ready. And then we'll just have to continue to work with the challenges from watering the course until we get the ponds constructed themselves.
Okay, thank you. My comment is it takes a lot of manpower to go out on the course and do repairs, fix valves, and do that almost on a daily to weekly basis. And we have a large investment in that golf course as it is. So, you know, I'm supportive of moving forward with replacing this irrigation system. I think it's a big asset to the community and I think it's something we just have to highly consider doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Next, Commissioner Garza.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. When we purchased the golf course, when the city purchased the golf course, it was a big investment. We did have an idea that the sprinkler system was going to be coming to an end soon. And I think it's a waste of resources not to have it fixed. I think it's, like I say, it's a big investment. We need to protect that investment. And it can still be a revenue for the city. So with that, I'm in support of that. I think it's a good thing to have a good golf course to bring people to the community and, you know, good quality of life for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, I'll check with you, Commissioner Lovett.
I appreciate that, Mayor. I concur with what was said with Mayor Pro Tim and also the Commissioner Garza. One of the things I'd like to ask Mr. Ockett and just to show people, it truly is a community golf course. It's my understanding that at least before COVID, that you were seeing a dramatic increase in tee times and rounds played. At least at that time, I want to say that I heard it was a 30% increase. Do I have those numbers right, Ms. Ockett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes, you have that correct. You know, when we met, we kind of covered all those numbers. I would say we're upwards of even maybe a little more of like 35%. You know, we had our shutdown for a few weeks, but even at that, we still have a huge uptick in rounds that we're seeing. Along with the restaurant was really picking up. It's been a great asset, I think.
Great. Thank you for that. And also, just to my understanding that the piping that we'll use, because the PVC was, everything is just more expensive right now, but we're going to go in with a little bit better piping. Is that correct, Mr. Hawalt?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. That is correct. Currently in the market, the price of resin has increased and resin is the material that PVC is made out of. And so when the irrigation companies first came back with their prices, I was a little shocked at how high the price of PVC was. And so I actually went out and visited with some of our other consultants just to confirm that the actual cost of PVC had risen that much. And they did confirm that, yes, bids all over the state right now are higher because of the higher prices of PVC. So much so that they're competitive with another material called HDPE. And HDPE actually has a longer useful life than what a PVC does and actually has less joints because it's actually a material that comes in rolls. And then they actually weld the joints together. They fuse them together, basically melt those joints together. And so my understanding is that the main lines of the irrigation system will be HDPE. And then the laterals that go out to the heads will be a PVC product.
Thank you, Mr. Hawalt. With that, I don't have any further questions and support protecting the asset that the city now owns. So thank you.
Great points. Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Elliott?
I think we need to do that and it's long overdue with all the leaks and things we've had. It really is a need and it'll help the city and the golf course so much. So I support it all the way.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request.
Commissioner Casals, second.
Okay, motion for approval from Commissioner Garza, second, Commissioner Casals. Ms. Burrows, could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Commissioner Rinder?
Commissioner Rinder, aye.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casals?
Commissioner Casals, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. By a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried. Next item under new business is request for approval of 2021 minimum wage increase. And for that, we're going to go to Mr. Hawalt.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. In 2019, during that legislative session, Senate Bill 437 was passed, which increases minimum wage over several years from 2019 moving forward. It started out, as we all recall, in 2019 at $7.50. In 2020, went up to $9. This coming year, in 2021, it'll go to $10.50. In 2022, $11.50. And then finally, in 2023, to $12. Between 2020 and 2023, that is a 33% increase in minimum wage. And as you guys are all aware, that just because we bring minimum wage up, it doesn't stop there. It'll actually have a ripple effect throughout our compensation and pay plan. Underneath this current year, it's going to only impact five job classifications. But by the time we get to year 2023, it'll actually impact 23 job classifications. And just so, for example, currently, our library assistant is a grade 10 within our pay scale. So by the time 2023 comes around, that position will now be at a grade 21 in our pay scale. So that's an 11 grade difference between them. Well, so that means our employees in 2023 that are at a 21 pay scale now have to get adjusted so we don't have compression at the bottom of our pay scale. So just because we're bringing up that minimum wage, it doesn't stop there. It's going to have to go and ripple throughout our entire compensation plan. So that's something that we're going to be working on and need to be cognizant of in the upcoming next two years. We will have to adjust for that compression and be able to, like I said, spread it out to where we don't have that within our pay ranges. Because of this, tonight, I'm recommending only increasing those positions that are below minimum wage will actually have an impact on 11 different employees. Because we are going to have to address the compression. We're going to have to address general wage increases in the future. And we're going to have to spread that scale back out like we just previously accomplished. I wish that we were at a point where I could say, hey, let's go ahead and start adjusting our pay scales now. But however, we've been thrown a curve ball here in 2020 and we're not sure and want to be cognizant of what our economy looks like. I mean, we've been doing well. We've been maintaining good grocery receipts tax. However, as we've entered into our traditional shopping season, obviously, here in November and December for the holidays and with retail businesses being closed down, there may be more online shopping, which would have had an impact on what our grocery receipts tax coming in in January and February may look like. So with that, like I said, I'm recommending only adjusting those 11 employees that are impacted currently, bring them up to the minimum wage. And then next year, when we start working and looking at the budget cycle for FY '22 and FY '23, start addressing the compression within the compensation study again. And then, once we're past 2023, what I'd look at then is see how the market has adjusted to what these increases have occurred to make sure then we are comparable with other communities past that point. But knowing where we are, we are in a good financial position. However, knowing that the future impacts of these reoccurring costs to wages could have an impact on our city's budget. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hawalt. I'll check with the commissioners now to see if there are any questions or comments. I'll begin with Commissioner Casals.
So, Justin, on the increase, how many employees is that going to affect? For 2020?
In 2020, so this next year, it'll have an impact on 11 total employees across our five different job classifications. The job classifications that will be impacted are our custodians, our library assistants, our wastewater treatment plant trainees, our wastewater service workers, and then our recreation building assistants. Of course, there's various numbers of employees within those job classifications. So it'll have a total impact on 11 employees.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Casals. Next, Commissioner Madrid, any questions or comments?
Commissioner Madrid here. I don't really have any questions or comments, but, you know, some of these employees deserve that praise. So that's my only comment.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Commissioner Rinder?
Commissioner Rinder, I concur with what you dealt said, that we need to keep employees paid. However, as we go from this year to the next several years, we're going to have less and less wiggle room to do anything about this. I mean, when it's mandated like this, it's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, I'll check with Mayor Pro Tim Bryant.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant? You know, I understand the financial side of this. My concern is kind of like Commissioner Madrid and Commissioner Rinder. What happens to the employees that we already have at, let's say, 1150? And you hire a new employee to come in and you pay them 1050 off the bat? It just doesn't seem right to the one you're already making 1150. I'm just not sure how to approach that. I do have some concerns about that.
Thank you for those comments, Mayor Pro Tim and Mr. Hawalt.
Yeah, and we certainly do understand and want to address that as well. And that's where we're going to start looking at how to, as I described, alleviate that compression. So the question becomes, where do you stop that? And making sure that we have enough gaps within some of the supervisory level positions and the line worker levels. And where we may have had an 11 grade gap previously between certain positions, we may end up with only a three grade gap in between them in the future. Because it comes down to affordability as well as what we can continue to afford on that reoccurring basis.
Okay. And I do have to say, Justin, that I'm very proud of the city that during the COVID situation, that we have not had to lay off any employees. And I am proud of that.
Thank you for those comments and your questions, Mayor Pro Tim. Did you have anything else to add?
No, I don't. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next, Commissioner Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be brief. I think this is going to create a big nightmare for finance department. But it's something that we have to deal. When you have a mandate, you have to follow that. Nothing you can do about it. So good luck with that. Mr. Hawalt and Claire and Leanne. Good luck with that and do your best you can. I'm sure you will, but good luck.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioner. And we do have the right folks in management to deal with this. You're right, it is a difficult situation. But we can work through it with Mr. Hawalt's management and leadership on this. Next, I'll check with Commissioner Lovett.
Thank you, Mayor. My questions have been asked and my comments have been made, so I don't have anything further.
Easy enough. Thank you, Commissioner Elliott.
There's something we've got to do. And I think it's one of those things that we've going to have to raise the minimum wage to be right. So I have no changes to be made for me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, I have no questions or comments. Everything's been answered as well.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, Commissioner Rinder, I would like to add one thing.
Yes, sir.
We have folks here that have small businesses and this is also going to impact the small business community. And it's going to hit those folks hard. And I, you know, I hope that they can work their way through this. Having said that, I move for approval.
I second that.
Commissioner Madrid, I second that motion.
Okay, motion to approve from Commissioner Rinder. And the second, I believe I heard Commissioner Garza speak up first. Sorry about that, Commissioner Madrid. Motion from Commissioner Rinder, second from Commissioner Garza. Ms. Burrows, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Rinder?
Commissioner Rinder, aye.
Commissioner Rowley?
Commissioner Rowley, yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Commissioner Lovett, yes.
Commissioner Madrid?
Commissioner Madrid, yes.
Commissioner Casals?
Commissioner Casals, yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Elliott, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Commissioner Garza, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. The vote's eight to zero and the motion is carried. Next in the agenda is reports of boards, officers, and committees. Be happy to hear from any of you that would like to report on the boards and committees that you serve on. But we have a scheduled report from Ms. Malonson, the monthly investment report. Ms. Malonson, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. November, we started the month with $46.5 million. We ended a little over $47 million. Quick breakdown of some of our ending cash. General Fund One, $1.9 million. Solid Waste Fund Two, $3.5 million. Environmental Fund Six, $7.7 million. Wastewater Fund Ten, $9.3 million. Fund Sixty Four, $2.6 million. Water Quarter Percent Fund Sixty Six, $1.8 million. Our Drainage Fund Eighty Eight, a little over a million. Our Our cash in bank is 23.8 million. And we continue with our state investment pool of 23.2 million. Our interest for the month was a little over 5,000. Our five-month interest year to date is 55,000. And the state pool is at 0.1215%, which is a little bit down from last month. And as Mr. Hawalt was talking, our grocery receipts, we are up a little over 1% compared to this time last year. And our five-month compared to our budget is 11.75% over budget. So we are holding our own at this point in time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Ms. Malonson. Appreciate it very much. I'll pause for any Commissioners that would like to speak up with questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thanks to Leanne. She's been busy writing checks.
Happy to do it.
I'm sure she's going to be tired by the time this thing is over. So thank you, Leanne. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Commissioner. Anyone else? Very good. Ms. Malonson, again, thank you for all you do, and thank you for your report this evening. Appreciate that very much. Do we have any other reports from boards, officers, and committees?
Commissioner Casaus here. I just would like to thank Lisa from Main Street for the Christmas parade. I think she did an outstanding job. I know she heard a lot of complaints about the traffic. And all I have to say to the public is you can always volunteer. She always looks for volunteers. So if you're out there complaining, come and volunteer with Main Street. There's a lot that you can help us with. Also, I want to thank Excel for the lights for Green Acres. I think that was awesome. And Lisa had a hand in that, too. So I would like to thank her and her volunteers. And thank Rocky. Rocky is the one that put the lights up. So thank you all.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. And I concur. The Christmas light parade was, was well done. And it's difficult to have to do it that way. And of course, the traffic, you know, was what it was. But I thought it was a, I thought it was a great job, and Green Acres looks wonderful with the Christmas lights. So thank you for bringing those things up and reporting from your service on the Main Street Board. Thank you, Commissioner Casaus. Any others?
Merry Christmas to everybody. This is Commissioner Elliott.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Render. I would like to thank our city attorney for his usual erudite and concise report once again.
Oh, goodness. Thank you for that. Anyone else?
You know, Mayor, if I can sit the Commissioner Lovett here. During this time, I always think about our men and women in the armed forces that will not be with their families during the holiday. And so certainly a shout out to them. And I hear so many great comments of Clovis, and it's the people that make Clovis what it is. And I agree with that wholeheartedly. And no doubt that if, and I'll just put it in a public, if you're alone and don't have family here for the holidays, reach out to somebody. And if you need to reach out to my family, we would love to host you for the holiday. But again, no doubt, you're already being asked by many folks. So Merry Christmas to all, and especially to our men and women in the armed forces.
Thank you for that, Commissioner.
God bless you.
Yes, Commissioner.
Merry Christmas to all the Commissioners and all the staff, especially their employees that are in front-line workers. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you for that. Same to you. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Render, did you have something to say there? We cut you off.
I said, God bless you, Leo.
Thank you for that comment. Any other reports? Let me check with Mr. Hawalt and/or Ms. Burrows for future agenda items.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. We have a few items scheduled for the first meeting in January. The quarter percent, which is designated for the pipeline project, will be sunsetting, so we'll be bringing that to you for introduction at the first meeting in January. We have this week finally received the agreements from the state for our capital outlay projects. And so the 100,000 for beach and field, for the baseball lighting there, the HVAC 100,000 for the food bank, the 250,000 parking lot resurfacing at AYSO, and the 75,000 for playground equipment. Those four agreements were received this week, and we will have them on the agenda for the first meeting in January for you to take action on. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Great, thank you for that. Commissioners, anyone have a future agenda item you'd like to bring up this evening? Very good. We'll move on then to announcement of date, time, and place of city board and commission meetings. And I'll just check. As far as we know, are these that are listed here still on?
Mayor, the only change that I have is item E, is that should be January and not December.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Burrows. So we should all note that City Hall will be closed on Thursday, December 24th, as well as Friday, December 25th for Christmas Eve and Christmas. City Hall will also be closed on January 1st for New Year's Day. There's a Civil Aviation Board meeting scheduled for 5:30 PM on Tuesday, January 5th. And our next city commission meeting will be all the way next year on January 7th at 5:15 PM. So Commissioners, I'd like to, I'd like to share a quote from one of my, one of my favorite leaders, who said that, that Christmas is a holiday that we celebrate not as individuals nor as a nation, but as a human family. When I think about the struggles that we face, and even as we think about the struggles that we face as a community, we still have it better than, than so, so many others. So there's, there's a lot to be thankful for and a lot to celebrate. But, but Christmas truly is a human family celebration. And so I encourage you, and I encourage the public to, to remember the reason for the season, and, and may, may grace and love and compassion win in our hearts and, and be our motive for, for the things that we do and say. And 2020 has been a doozy, but we're, we're all hopeful for, for the future. The calendar turning to 2021 won't magically make some of the struggles that we're dealing with go away, but we can be hopeful about the future. I know that, that all of you share a vision with me for a period of growth and prosperity like maybe we've never seen before on the, on the other side of, of this struggle. So, so Merry Christmas and, and Happy New Year. And I look forward to, to seeing you all in the new year. Thank you. Our meeting is adjourned.
Merry Christmas.